All right, the first item of the agenda, I am connected to the item is the renewal reservation agreement with the Blanchard Senior Citizens Center for fiscal year nineteen dash twenty, beginning one July of twenty nineteen and ending thirty June twenty twenty. The renewal agreement is an annual requirement. Mr. Floyd, is there anything you would like to say?
Unless on account of our senior citizens, I'm not so sure if we agree about it. It's just an annual renewal of the reservation of the senior citizens buildings.
All right. Is there any comments or questions anybody has? May we have a motion, please? A motion by Matt and seconded by Michael or the other way around? All right. Are there any discussions? Hearing none, please go over.
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. The next item of the agenda on the agenda is the senior citizen request to address the council concerning the improvement of the sidewalks surrounding the senior citizens center. According to the documents that were submitted, Mr. Birch is going to speak.
Okay.
Welcome.
I'm Mike Birch, representing the anchors of the senior nutrition center. We have an issue we want to bring before the center and you can see by the number of people I brought with me that it concerns us and we're talking about the safety of the senior citizens of this center. Back to what you just did, renewing the agreement with the senior citizens, I think the agreement with the city and the relationship between the city and the senior citizens system of the nutrition department has really worked well and I think everybody in the senior citizens that were getting good news and had good tips, you know, a lot of things going, if you read the leaders, article in the Blanchard paper, you'll get an idea of what's going on. One of the things that concerns us is here recently, we've had a couple of ratings fall and they've fallen on the sidewalk on the north side of the senior center. And if you've been down there and looked at it, you'd see there's erosion. Sometimes it happens while the water's going through there and water has its problems there. There are the plants that was there for trees when we used isolation long time ago and we put a lot of apple there and the trees are gone, but the plant is still there. So the sidewalk is in disrepair and it's a safety problem for our citizens because we have viewed the center all the time. They've asked us to come with the council, we know you guys have a lot of infrastructure issues and find out the amount of money we can do. We're also asking that you place a priority on fixing that sidewalk and also at the same time doing something about drains. Drains, you know, back on the west side and down the street is just about three blocks. So we think it's a safety issue, yes, that you put a priority on it and help us keep going. So you have any questions to me or anybody else?
You know that when remodeling, we did remodeling, you replaced part of the sidewalk down near the side entrance. Is the problem farther closer to Main Street or farther down toward?
I think the problem was primarily on the north side. From the entrance there where you have a handicap ramp and then down Broadway, that's the same situation that the sidewalks were on up north on Main Street. I mean, you've got the same elevated sidewalk there with, you know, some steps and guardrails. To me, that will be taken care of at the same time. I think the primary issue is the north side, the north sidewalk. But if you're going to do that, you might as well do the other one and you need to work on it, in my opinion, work on the drainage there also.
Was there a panel that was raised up by an old tree root or something causing tripping hazard or something specific that caused the fall?
I think it was water, wasn't it? I believe so, am I wrong?
The last fall was mud.
Mud?
Yeah, she slipped in mud and it's primarily on the north side.
And initially before, I believe was committed to the same type of disaster. So we're asking for a priority on fixing that and know you guys have a lot of infrastructure issues, a lot of things and not much money, so please just consider what you can do to help us get there and help the safety of our senior citizens. I don't think we...
We appreciate you.
Thank you, Rob. For your kind.
I know the original sidewalk was done with a ramp.
That ramp is already gone from like two thousand six. They don't do that particular one, I believe, anymore. So what's coming, they, they drop off, there's a menace that there may be another possibility of federal funding for ramps, but they're, they come in cycles, so we should have to let them see what there is available, but it's due later.
All right. A couple of drains, we're kind of doing, we're there for that in any way in front of this drain, but you know?
No, this is kind of a lead, at least when you look at it, because we have sewer line here also. We're all worried about lowering that out very much because of sewer line.
And we found out, I think, right there where the handicap ramp is, there's a pipe that comes in, makes a ninety degree turn and they are somewhere on Main Street that probably blocked out. And we need to figure out how we can unplug, get that water out there.
Come on up, give us your name.
Susan Hall. This is the sidewalk that was repaired on the north side that you're talking about, that is when we did the remodeling and discovered the coal sheet, you know, the coal sheet, so they had to do that.
Build that all the way up there?
And the, a major concern is we have a little handicap ramp, but it's unusable. If it's spitting rain, it's a lake and you can't even use it in the hall.
All right. We have, a work order has been prepared to, to, I, we believe there's a drain in the ramp, the handicap ramp, so a work order has been prepared. We're going to use a rotor router or whatever we need to use to clean out that door and see where it goes. Do you know where it goes again?
No.
Okay, to see where it goes and see what...
Hey, everyone, thanks for coming.
So that we won't have the water problem just to mess with the mud. So that's, that's, that would be our number one priority. Work order's already been submitted, I believe, that our, I think our public work director is, is on vacation.
Hey, you can just go back to there.
So he, he will take care of it hopefully tomorrow and we'll see whether we can find out. Mr. Floyd has already agreed to find a ramp and to replace the sidewalks. Hopefully when we do that, it will be both the one going south down the street on the north side of the building. So we're, we're looking at all the options that we can right now, but hopefully we fix the immediate problem of the water and...
The extension also may have a ready type thing over the water, you know, a metal field that would be handicap compliant, whereas they put their walkers, you know, these are walkers over, over that, it's easy.
Yeah, I'll give a penny and we'll see what it'll take, because again, the handicap ramp, the way it comes out, it locks on waters, so we need to figure out a way to get that flow back around it, because even around the alley comes around, it's the west side of the alley, maybe come around the side of the building.
Have you had that ramp, right there, where it said?
No, you don't have to.
There's a road or much to put in.
I don't think there's a better place to put it. Because, I mean, honestly, if you put the, the ramp there, it's still going to crack the sidewalk the entire time.
Okay, so you'll have a penny to look into that?
Yeah.
All right. I, I take that date as the sixth of May here in a couple of weeks to see what we can do and then I'll, I'll check back with everybody and see what, see what we've done. I noticed our latest fire chief is here. Well, do we need a motion to have you do anything with the...
No, I've got the direction, so...
All right, so we'll move on to item number four. The fire department is requesting purchase six division of AED, automatic external manipulators, one for each replaced in fire units as a PAFD and one at City Hall. Money has been budgeted in prior department under the June of one for capital purchases. First, this is under state contract, no CO2 required for, however, Blanchard municipal code one dash zero four requires approval of the state council, so any purchase, C can help. So does anybody want to have any comments, questions that I can answer?
Chief is here.
Do you want to come give us a presentation?
I can if I want to.
How's work?
Again, so we have eleven apparatus, trucks and engines. We currently have six AEDs on the mountain. We've used them countless times to bring people back to life with shock their larks. My goal has always been to eventually get a unit, each one of our pieces of equipment. That way, anywhere we're at, we're able to administer lifesaving, care immediately about a delay in getting the appropriate equipment. We've had multiple occasions where, you know, we started CPR and AED showed up right away and we were able to resuscitate. If you don't have it, you're going to be doing CPR and every, what was the percentage? Every minute you lose, like five percent of chance of bringing that person back alive. So the six new ones, we can put those on the apparatus because they'll have an added feature where we can actually monitor the heart...
Y'all can go ahead and chat if you want to.
The ones are existing to City Hall because it's reliable. We've used it for quite a few years now and I trust that when people see all of they ever have to use it, that it's reliable, work forms, value question, and extend our eligibility to safety.
And just put on two day class for City Hall employees on CPR.
We haven't done that. Yeah, we, we didn't have any CPR instructors, Catherine Keenan and myself, we went to CPR instructor class and we were able to administer CPR, first aid training to anybody, our own firefighters and city staff, so we're planning to do that. Every two years we'll go for a new, we'll put the classes on.
You're going to hold classes also to City Hall students or used to go and...
Yeah, they were, they were trained as part of CPR. So some of that is probably...
All right, so if there's no more questions or are there any questions, may we have a motion?
I'll make a motion if we approve the purchase of six manipulators under state contract.
Motion by Matt, seconded by Steve. All right, any discussion?
Thank you.
Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. Agenda item number five is the nomination and appointment of a reappointment, I guess, of VOA and Beta. No nomination is needed here, we just need to vote. I set this up so we would vote on each individual person separately. I'm going to take them in order, we have three individuals on VOA.
If only I could get more people in there watching.
Tim, pass. No? Okay, I'm going to have to ask Tim how he's just in there. All right, so let's, let's start with Melissa. Are there any comments or questions? Does anybody want to have any discussion? Please go over. David?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
Matt?
No.
And Eddie?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you get a motion and a second on that?
He just nominated him.
I got you, okay.
Okay. All right. The next one is Donna Stokes. I didn't think we needed a nomination.
But you put their name, that's a nomination.
All right. Okay, Donna Stokes, is there any questions or comments? Any discussion? Please go over. Okay. Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Tim, pass. Any questions? Comments?
Is he available?
Yes, did he want to?
AJN, why is?
Okay, is there any questions or comments? Any discussion? Please go over. Stephen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the Beta, Blanchard Economic Trust Authority. We're going to do the city representatives first. I am appointing Michael Scalp and myself to continue serving on board. Current term expires in April of twenty nineteen, the new term will expire in twenty twenty one. I'll start with Michael. Questions or comments? Any discussion?
I do want to point out in the minutes, it says a four-year term, but there are only two-year terms.
Well, yeah, well, the regular rule members, it's four, but for a city council, it's set to stay for two.
Right, it's two years, so it has four years on the...
I don't really have my conversation in the background.
The agenda is correct, the agenda is correct, it's two years.
Yeah, it's, the council is two.
On business, I don't know.
I have a one plus sixteen McLaren phone.
The audio works great on it.
Do we have any more questions or comments? Any discussion? Please go over. Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and then the next one is for me.
So you can hear the mayor just behind you, question mark.
Any discussion? Please go over. David?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Ray, I would like to just say that I have spoken to everybody that was on this list. I think there was, what, eight people? Each one I called individually, each one I talked to, each one wanted to continue on the respective boards. I'm sorry, I didn't like to say that. Mr. Ray, Greg Ray, we were unable to find where he was reappointed when his term expired in June of eighteen. His term is for four years and will expire in June of twenty twenty. Do you have any comments? Would you just... Please go over. Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Our last visitor is, she's on the day, named Jennifer Frazier. Ms. Frazier fell below fifty percent of pressure in the last four months. She missed the meeting, she missed the meetings on December eighteenth, she stays on the February twenty-fifth of nineteen, February twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, and in January in twenty nineteen, regularly. She was present on the January eighteenth and in February the second vote of twenty eighteen, or twenty nineteen, I'm sorry. I spoke with Ms. Frazier, she states she missed the meeting because she is a tax accountant. She, it was tax season and she simply just forgot about the meeting. She remarked...
Yes, you're right.
I did tell her that the council did reappoint her, she wouldn't have to, it would be a meeting. I'm going to ask for approval from Mr. Perry Minister whether she can be allowed on the board and then we will take your...
Yes, unlike other types of disqualification, one of our persons can be reappointed. Is she here at the meeting?
No, she is not.
And that's not a mandatory requirement, but if you have the right to make a nomination and if you felt like that that was something that you wanted, a condition of your nomination, you can make that nomination. You can either nominate another individual or you can wait until...
Next meeting.
It's tax season again.
I had to ask you what the question is, Eddie, one, she did say she was in the city continuing service.
She did say she was interested in...
And the question was, a couple of those meetings, special meetings, that was scheduled?
Yes, I did in the regular meeting. Well, but the statute says whether it's special.
I was going to say, and it wasn't the normal scheduled meeting that was special a couple of meetings.
She missed the normal scheduled meeting in December of eighteen and April first. And I'm just relaxed.
General media for first.
Yeah.
Yeah, she missed.
That's a regular meeting.
I mean, I haven't concerned ever, any board member dropped below fifty percent. Us up here as elected officials, if we drop under fifty percent, we're off the board. No votes? No nothing, we are no longer a councilman. I mean, I expect anyone who wants to serve to be there to serve, because otherwise you're taking a voice away from the citizens of the city if you're not there.
Well, I understand it's my right to nominate her, but I'm going to leave that choice up to the board. I will accept the nomination to either accept her to continue on the board or pay a nomination to remove her from the board and then it will be your decision, your, the council's decision, one pair of votes.
The actual status is she was currently nominated because of the access. You've got the right to nominate her. It's confirmed by the board. She was reassigned at this time.
Simple enough to do, simple enough. I will make the nomination for her to do it. Now, second fails, then again, I'll take it. So the motion was made by Eddie to go to, to keep her on the board. Now, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, fine. All right. Does anybody want to discuss Jennifer?
Well, I think the reason I'm second is because number one, anybody that's willing to serve, and I do think, yes, everybody knows that they have the fifty percent threshold, that they have to also be able to get out of a couple of special meetings, which play into the percentages. And during being a tax accountant, and if anybody that works in accounting between February first and April fifteenth don't have a life other than sitting in front of a computer, so I think that she should be allowed to continue serving as well. We have people locked down in four one to certain age. We'd have to go out and find somebody else to serve, and she's willing to, so I, for that reason, I say, I'm, that's the reason I second her, I want her a nomination to stay on the board.
I give my very best, which I do now.
My rebuttal to that again is we all have jobs up here, Steven works full time, I work full time, we were all called for those things, special meetings, you were there, I was there, Steven was there, Eddie was there. I think, I, I know any backups and I'd rather give someone a chance to serve and show up and serve and nominate someone who was removed from the board than not show up. So that's just my opinion.
All right. Motion, any further discussion? Motion is to accept her to continue on the board, but you understand that she would have to make the move. So we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, please go over. Michael?
Yes.
Stephen?
No.
Matt?
Sorry, I don't have a tripod.
Eddie? I'm going to say, I'm going to say no.
Motion failed.
All right. The next, the next item on the agenda is the approval of a contract with Delta Community Action Foundation, Delta Public Transit for the transportation service assistance during fiscal year nineteen and twenty, beginning one July of twenty nineteen and ending third June twenty twenty. And do you want to speak on this?
Clarification question. It will be next.
We will, we will solicit applications from, from... All right. At our February meeting, we authorized the issuance of a letter to support the Delta Community, Community Foundation, who operates Delta Public Transit in Blanchard. This is an annual amount of eighteen thousand dollars payable in a monthly rate of one thousand five hundred dollars per month for one vehicle. Mr. Floyd, would you like to make any?
Yeah, I've commented the bid, authorized the letter, support, we issued that. The contract now comes back to y'all for ratification. No terms changed, the, the dollar amount is still the same as this year and as it been last year and we recommend that you accept it, because it's very helpful for senior citizens.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions? Okay, is there any discussion? All right. Matt, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Matt?
Yes.
Seconded by David. Please go over. Stephen?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
Sorry, I don't have a tripod, I'm trying my best.
Do you have a list of ropes?
There are your ropes, I didn't put them on there.
All right. The second item is the approval of additional ropes, land street improvement funded by oil and gas tax, which we received on the, from July twenty eighteen through February twenty nineteen, which authorizes the use of McLean County contract with S H to make our improvements. We had already agreed on seven miles, that's from north Rockwell, all north of Rockwell from sixty-two to Twin Bridges, fifty-fifth street from seventy-six to County Line, south to Carthor, southeast seventh to Tenth Street, Seventh Street from County Line to Oregon, northwest Tenth Street from County Line to Oregon, northeast twenty-fifth street from seventy-six to Rockwell, and on seven, County Line, South County Line from year sixty-two to Seventh Street. That's seven miles. We are asking for approval to add an additional five point five miles at a cost of two hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. These include, on East Seventh Street from... These include, on East Seventh Street from Tyler to Macarthur. Tenth Street from Rockwell to Macarthur. North County Line from West Tenth to Twenty-Fifth. North County Line from West Twenty-Fifth to Seventh. North County Line from Fifty-Fifth Street to one and a half mile south. This would be a total of twelve point five miles, city will still maintain section line roads. McLean County has a contract with S W H and we will be piggybacking on that contract. I spoke with, I text Terry Daniels, County Commissioner, and, and he said that we could piggyback on the account and so did S W H. Both were in agreement that we could do so. So, Mr. Floyd, I hope you have the gentleman, he's going to be able, he has a device that will be able to cover one complete road at a time. That would be the.
The rest.
The rest of the road. Instead of just doing half of it and then turn around and do the other half. He's going to do the whole road at one time, so. Mr. Floyd, do you have anything else to say?
Yeah, basically, you know, we've already appropriated back in December or, or November X amount of money, I don't have another. And then the other was two hundred and some thousand for the oil and gas that we received in the east end. Well, three hundred, about three hundred fifty-two thousand. What I did, and then Ryan calculated, and what we did, we took their numbers, because they have a contract for oil and chip, they have a contract for BOMAC, and they also have a contract for asphalt overlay. And what we did, we looked at, you know, we've been going out and, and a couple of works could, they couldn't get the, the ATT, which is average digging traffic. And out of those twelve and a half streets, four of those had more than a thousand. Some of them fourteen hundred, some of them fifteen hundred, I think one of them had eighty-two. So what we looked at is, you want to try to, if I'm wrong, if you want to try to maintain and improve the better streets, so they don't deteriorate. And so with that in mind, I suggest maybe four miles of asphalt. And what I did, we calculated that a high number, just to try to cover our bases. And then also the rest of the oil and chip. None of these streets do we have contracts with oil companies. That's, you know, bonus. So, right now, until the city, the average digging traffic, oil and chip would be a good, good overlay. As long as you do a good job. Still, I don't know, doing the basic repairs on the streets. So, with that, what we're hoping, and of course, the total cost of three hundred and eighty-two thousand outweighed the cost of three sixty-five. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not actually going into the tax commission, but I'm not looking for March. And, and we took out the April application, which their reports are not in close, so, you know, if y'all are agreeable. I, I think the dollar amount that we came up with, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, is, is on the high side. Because what we did, they, they had trucks at eighty-five dollars a day per, or an hour per truck. So we calculated down how many miles we could do per day and how many trucks that we would need, that are giving us that information. Our, the counties already told us that, all three counties have already told us that they would help us with trucks for each, from each, and what we have to want. So, I think we can offset that cost, but just for the sake of, of funding, I wanted to add that in. So if we do get a little topic, you know, you know, there's that little bit of cushion for the use tax to fall back on.
What's our plan before?
Uh. Yeah, and actually, we're still using that. We got two or three wells after that, and we got some to the north. And the truck can, or what, tearing, tearing us up. What we are looking at, and I haven't said this to you, hold up, Eddie and I, I'll tell you this later, but we did meet with the other communities in the state, or the O M L, in the oil companies. And we're all pretty much come to a agreement that one of the major issues is the road maintenance. And right now, that's all it's able to do, is kind of do, you know, mine maintenance. So what we are doing, looking at, on a chart of it, trying to come up with a competitive way, and one of the ideas we're looking at, that's looking for the well to be prevented. But I think we can look at. To the state, those money goes to state and to county, we get the zero of it. So we're looking at another methodology, kind of figured out, A, if the roads can be maintained or suitable for heavy car traffic. And then if they are, then we may look at just doing the maintenance area with the oil companies. If they're not, then I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that the, uh, oil companies should be held responsible to bring those up to a standard. So they know what kind of trucks is going to be running.
I would agree with that, but if this is what.
Well, exactly. Well. Well, the best thing we need to do right now is go out.
One plus sixteen McLaren. They're talking about the roadway.
On both of them, so, like Twenty-Fifth, there's, we're going to Morgan, they cut west, or going west, which goes out into Prairie County, which is very jurisdictional. I know that the state just issued, O E G just issued well permits up on Seventy, I believe it is. But they'll probably, more likely to be going west on Seventy, you know, or they'll go eighty-fifth.
I'll, I'll be starting doing these audits, um, whenever I find out about them.
Yeah, and what's, what's, kind of makes matters worse, the tunnel that they studied, that they kind of laughed, just laughed it alone. That Grady County got over eight million dollars in road production tax, which is earmarked a statute for roads. Grady County announcing roads been up there, up there.
Well, are, are these, these still on using, Greg, are these still using Morgan Road quite yet?
I don't know, yes, yes.
So, you know, whatever, they're still.
I've already calmed down.
We have entered into a.
Part of a agreement.
Uh, with, with O E G. About this fix.
E O G.
They're going, huh?
E O G.
E O G to fix Twenty-Fifth.
Let's see, Morgan Road was done prior to the road maintenance. Yeah, plus there's at least two different locations, E O G plus New Fifth.
I still.
Yes, you're right.
Get together with the Grady County Commissioner and see whether he can do the same thing that Terry has agreed to do for Fifty-Fifth Street in Blanchard.
But I guess we let those roads off purpose, like to, to try to address us a little somehow separately, since the oil companies are less, are the ones that are turning in decent traffic.
Yes, sir.
Got a question, could you tell me your name? Kent Calhoun. Or not, if he didn't Morgan Road consider to be part of Blanchard, which is very part, part of it. Why are we talking about, you know, between, like, set job? If he go out and work on it, if it down where he don't have two complete lanes in a lot of places, it's getting in very bad shape.
Well, if you just go out there and drive, that you would see that, would you understand?
And those trucks are just tearing it up.
And now you signed down there and said, no trucks allowed, so yet, they just keep going. Well, the problem with that is that.
Somebody needs to enforce that.
Well, no, well, trucks are allowed and not allowed, in other words, if they're cutting off of sixty-two, coming up Morgan Road, and they're cutting off of Kinsbury and hit Highway seventy-six, bypassing downtown. Yes, that's illegal, but if they have oil field, or, uh, oil, which they do on Twenty-Fifth and North on Morgan Road, they have the legal authority to use that as a truck rack to get to those wells, to down that rock.
If we can enforce, can enforce the trucks without, if they have a well, active well on that road, you know, the. Road not playing too, you can't really get up down it two lanes.
Well, we understand, it's okay, that's why we're wanting to try to get with the oil companies, make them pay for it.
You talk about Grady County, like, where's that job out there on Morgan Road?
I'm already not, we're still trying to, after, I, I mean, I can tell you I live on Seventh Street or off Seventh Street.
Just let the other channels know that you can hear on this channel.
The road, the trucks go down and tear up. Is that the point where there doesn't know good and bad, which is, we still have the same file, at the same points, inch and a foot, and then two, we gotta do some?
Well, when we refer to the Grady County, what we're not talking, because we're talking, and what we're saying is that a lot of those wells exist in Grady County. So they come through our city, whether it could be a Morgan Road, Tenth Street, or however they get to us, to the, to the wells. They're going car roads into Grady County. And also, possibly if they were there in Mike County, but I'm going to.
Thank you. All right, is there any other, please come forward, station eight.
And I have a suggestion for you, on your road conditions, usually in that, like I work, on your contracts that you have with the local companies, instead of having them do the minimum requirements go to wires. How about upgrading the, uh, the strength of the mix that they're using, be it concrete or asphalt, to make the asphalt binders stronger and it'll support the way they structure, so they're not having to replace these roads every time they tear them up. With those stronger binders, asphalt binders, and stronger concrete mixes, trucks can go on those roads for twenty-three years without destroying it. So. Okay, and I, just something I wanted to throw your way?
That's one of the things that we are looking at, that what we can do and negotiate, because there is a provision, a bill that's pending right now on Senate four. This is, if the city does anything that, that keeps the, the mineral rights zone from getting their oil, then it's a tap.
Right. Well, like I said, Morgan Road contract is set up to where it has the minimum requirements the O E G requires for the road. Uh, but if you put in your, do it in them, make the roads, uh, where they will support the traffic trailers, uh, I mean, that might be, that way you're not having to do this over two, three years, so.
And actually, the city has got this, along with, that picture, that aspect of the community area.
One plus sixteen McLaren. Costs seven hundred dollars. Ten gigs of RAM, two hundred fifty-six gigs of storage. Twenty megapixel camera on the back, sixteen megapixel camera on the front.
With a solution. All of this, setbacks, roads, layers, safety.
Uh, no way for blue, no way for small, no, no.
We've already had two meetings with the oil company and we're fixing to have another one with both, just these eight cities. And we're, trust me, we're working on it, we're just not there yet. We have a problem with Morgan Road in the part of the city county, part of it's in the city. So that's why I'd say I would like to get together with the oil company, with Grady County and the city, and see whether we can work something out that can fix Morgan Road. Be it temporary or be it permanently, just get something done. We've had the same problem on Fifty-Fifth.
It does a poor game.
Something done, it just takes a while to get it, and I hate that, but it, but it happens. All right, is there any more questions or comments on roads? All right, is there, can we have a motion, please? Motion by Matt, seconded by.
Second.
Michael. Any discussion? Please go along.
Matt.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
Now, that was before we had all that.
All right, the last agenda item is a motion to the resolution number twenty nineteen oh four, which is accepting the sanitary sewer improvement in downtown or in, in Old Town in Blanchard. We had a CDC grant that, that covered this, the city had to pay half of it, we got the grant. The, the Georgia contract, they did, they ended up costing, coming in below, below the estimate of three hundred eighty-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars and sixty cents. City engineer has done a final inspection on Wednesday, April tenth. Mr. Sullivan recommends acceptance, along with final payment to the contractor and to the engineering service contractor release and the engineer certificate of completion. Is there any questions or comments on this?
And state order?
Well, I did my state order number two, included that segment.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be scoped down, street one, I wonder if you buy it.
I haven't seen it. It's still getting handled.
Whatever they did there, apparently.
Yeah. The, the one problem, it is fine, but I, I did not keep that.
I still, I talked to him, I haven't had smell or, no, it wouldn't have been.
Yeah, I think I talked to him about some of the costs on that, and we've got city guys, you know, making some minor changes in house, which is a big step.
Did they change the sewer layout?
There was stuff to it, I don't know if they've done it yet.
Okay.
But I, Mayor, I would add, this is the second C D P G sewer project that we did. And, and this is, I, I think if sewer system, though not a hundred percent perfect, is a hundred percent better than it was when we started this process three, four years ago.
We don't hear, hear the complaints that we used to hear, and we don't have the problems that we used to have, so, but money won't spend, spend, I'm sorry. Where is, where is the sewer recover that is or is not, has not been recovered?
Uh, it's.
North pass, the construction, city shit's in there.
Yes.
And you said you know that there's a place to not get, they were.
I know they've talked about it, I might have.
Talked with, and, and it was already a city process to take some of those, some of the lids that have twenty-two, twenty-five holes in them. And, you know, if you get that in the wrong area, that, you know, that doesn't bother them, it's out of the field somewhere, but if you get it right next to, you know, a apartment house or a senior center or something, you really don't want that, you want to get that sealed up.
And you have two, uh, police stations coming into it right there.
Right there.
One is for ancient, one from the high school coming into it right there, where that area is.
Where you have, as far as we know, the police, who was right there in that area, and the fire station. Have you, have you heard any, or, have you, my old town, did you?
No, it's not by the city shit.
Yeah, it's, no, not the city shit, it's the system.
Okay.
And I will tell you also, because this is our final C D P G project, we are still working on the acter coming in June, here in the city. Millions of noise equipment, for the rat, that they call, the, the rat, the horn and type, what it does, it has a bigger, it sends, it sends an echo. And it goes down and it actually maps anything that you have a problem with, so we're going to try to map the entire system. They'll also find, based on the echo, they'll find manholes, which could be found, right, like down on Seventh Street. I'm sure it's still something.
Which we've been having, paying, you know, five dollars a foot to tell. Which we've been having to pay, you know, five dollars a foot to tell lies for to find find manholes.
Well, you still have to do that, you know, basically discover how to tell lies once you find the the problem or the echo. They'll have to go in and see exactly what this is and what this is.
He wants to hear.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Exactly right.
Okay, any other discussion or any other uh questions or comments? I just follow this. What's the intention for first year?
A hundred percent for first year. They've dropped the fifth, I believe it is.
Fifth since the year I think.
I think so, yes.
Okay, let me move the adoption resolution that we nineteen oh four. Motion by Michael, seconded by. Speaker Steve. All right, any further discussion or any discussion I should say? All right, please call Rome.
Uh David. Yes. Michael.
Yes.
Steven.
Matt.
Yes.
Eddie.
Motion carried.
All right, that puts us into the decision agenda for under one two five. Does anybody need any call now? All right, uh any question, comment? All right, if you could uh make a motion, please, for agenda under one two five. So. Motion by Michael, seconded by. I'll second it. Seconded by. All right, any discussion? Please call Rome.
Michael.
Yes.
Steven.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Eddie. Uh Eddie.
Yes.
Motion carried. For eyes, uh one intention which will be counted as another.
All right. Uh staff remark. Let me go through these that were carried over from uh last month and uh and then if anybody has any questions or any other ideas, we can uh we can go into them. We still don't know anything uh about the light on main and tent. Still think we want that light on main and tent. We're going to take it. So.
Well, no, we have to pay for it, but we still have to have a per by our own, because that is state highway. They they may act unobliged clear.
Well, can we get that in motion? So can you have that approved or some sort of fucking there come through or you have to?
The plans have been submitted. Uh TDC did the plans for that there. And so uh they, when we were there, they made their comments. Uh Wayne made made those adjustments or made those changes and submitted them back to them. Of course, ODOT's saying, well, we don't have the money, et cetera. So I, you know, I mean, once we do have the funds, and I think we all agree it'd be a tip. And once we have that available to go forward, then uh then we'll obtain without approval. But what you don't want to do is is not do this before you get their approval now and a year from now, federal highway will change. And you have to rebuild all the plans and go through the entire process again.
All right, we still don't know anything on uh speed limit or on safety to.
No, we have not gotten any phone from them.
All right, uh the drainage problem on on Rockwell was a product last uh last month. Uh I understand when when uh Randy's gonna start working on it. Kenny, did you do some kind of?
I looked at Randy, was gonna see what he could do first. Um it's there's just not much fall for it there. And with a thirty-three foot total ride, like, you know, you can't dig very deep ditch or else you're you're totally outside the area which you have to work in.
What what Terry suggested to Randy is remove the brick wrap, which is a bigger problem.
Yeah.
And then put some concrete earth, some asphalt buildings down, pan that out. And then change out the tenements down further down the street. But when you do that, if you go around the water south or north, and then it cuts across, you know, the road right there. Correct. I think they're gonna have to keep on going.
Yeah, they're gonna have to keep on heads. You got a lot of ditch to clean out and break this problem.
God, put this down for a second. God, fix my hair.
It's a major headache. It's not a it's not a good.
For the most part, for the many times, we have these two big holes on either side of her table or filled in where everything's washed out to keep the standing water.
Yeah.
Randy supposed to be uh they get all that there for that. And Terry has said he would help. He he would get some assistance on it, so it's working progress. Okay, just tell us of dispatcher. Uh I'm Mr. Floyd, but you know, interviews have been coming. They're on his desk waiting for.
Yeah, they gave you all the applications prior in into that. Giving all the applications for all positions that are available to include coordinator, the dispatcher, et cetera, so.
Administrative assistants, so we should.
Yes, and the the uh reserve officers. We have like a nine they've heard nine openings for the reserve officers, so I don't know. Not that thick, so I can't tell you how many applications that we have made through the process that they're giving us and what they're rejected, so.
All right, I'm 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 a little bit invested in the warrant program. How did that work out today?
I don't know. Uh I was passing uh Dee when she uh came in and and I was coming over here, so I don't know. They were supposed to go out and pick up everybody, not everybody, but start picking up people for the judge to see. And I know they did, but I I didn't say come in.
Okay, that's our current plan. We have two, we have two uh ju- a judge comes twice a month to uh to Blanchard, so we're going to pick up outstanding warrants on people on those two days. And I have him appear before the judge that's in town that day, so that's our current plan and.
But I'll find out. I don't know.
But you'll soon as I get.
But I know they didn't do it on the juvenile court day because juvenile.
This is my first live video that I've ever done on my channel, so I don't have a tripod or nothing like that.
Four oh five Jackson, we're still waiting on pine here.
Uh my understanding of pine here is I'm gonna move their their lines, so the ditch will be cut, you know, from third street down to fourth. It's it's about all we're moving, basically. Uh the guys told me they need a transit to shoot from fourth down to fifth. Does it go all the way to six? No, it doesn't. Six to the line. No, it doesn't. It goes to fifth. So they're wanting to shoot a transit from fourth down to fifth. And then that one didn't, I don't think it had that much utilities.
Yeah, it it looked like you had a gap. It looked like you had a gap and she couldn't do some good uh in that last block.
It's our, yeah, it's our uh. Well, typically when you do that, you're gonna pay for it. You're gonna get a bill. Yeah.
All right, if it's.
In public, it's always a public utility. Yeah, because they have the right of constitution to use city public rights to provide utilities to public, so.
What's your reading of fence putting down there without a locate called it?
There is a possibility when they do all that fire build out, they'll abandon those lo- those lines. If they do, then we can certainly widen it out.
We can, yeah, we've talked with everyone involved, uh all the city staff. They're aware that if if that comes about, we're gonna instruct them to get.
But no, two weeks ago, when we had the heavy rain, I drove by there and that ditch, if it does, maybe track over its hole pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
And it's, I I think it's too often that it was, we can keep covers cleaned out. Uh that's that's a big problem. You get, you know, you kind of green it goes down the left side of the cover and you know, it's not good.
That's kind of something we brought up last year. It was where you could take a day to go and be relaxing on the cover.
Yeah, start cleaning something up. Yeah, because I know those dry here at the uh main and and sixty-two. Three limbs and everything they count.
Well, if there are people that have that problem, please ask to call us and we'll see what we can do to fix it. All right, I I are we still okay with the budget being held on the Fourth of June? If anybody had any problem with that, if nobody had any problem, everybody's okay with it. All right, all right, that's all the things that I had. Does anybody else have anything that missed anything?
I have one, and it's the uh study they were gonna do on the potential schools on on Tenth, it's where they'll all drive.
I need to call Wayne and he came over, I showed him something and he he can spend, have one of his guys get back on it, but I've not heard from him. Yeah, on that one, I'm there. I follow up with the TDC on that one.
Mayor, I've got one.
Okay.
Uh Northwest Tent and Morgan. I had a good visit with the president of Open Associates. Uh his name's David Stratt. He's the one that we teamed with on this project. Uh they uh have an ongoing relationship through Turnpike or with Mr. Gatz, the new director of ODOT. So he instructed me the best way to handle this is to resend the letter that we sent to Mr. Patterson.
Okay.
Rescind it to Mr. Gatz and then let him follow up.
Okay.
See what we can do, so. Do you all have this? Do you have the original letter? Do I have it?
I think I did, I believe. I no, I think you sent it to me and I put out a letter.
I'll get it and figure out who's got it and get it revised to Gatz's age.
We appreciate that, and I think that was only I and when someone being on that you saw.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're done. The expecting is the second two, right, June?
Yes. Then we we talked about them on the first.
Yeah, on the first.
Finally, staff of Mark's words in line with his, uh speaking with President of Brad Hall. He wanted uh city, we submitted the ODOT all been tent and Morgan, he wants us all to say.
Seven to him.
Correct. That's right. And he, I mean, he's a legislator, he knows to go above the director, but at least it's one more person than the director here for us. And that's his.
That's his. He matters, he matters, so.
All right.
And we submitted the director of this, we did to him.
Okay.
On the uh on the drainage issues that we've been looking at too, I had two other addresses I needed to have you add to your notes to look at. And I, this one's uh two fifteen South Jefferson, which has got the the maybe something we need to work over to clean out the uh a lot of dish control areas which looks like a blocking. Unfortunately, the developer has never built land and drainage to the property is not something we have any control. But the drainage to that opening is apparent blocking. The other one's uh five twenty-one North Harrison. And that that's where the the what's up the drainage backup on that comes through, goes under the hide under our street into the uh the drainage dish that goes down out past the schools.
All right, okay.
So I'll kind of keep that on those two.
Okay.
I worked on Randy.
Yeah, I'll get with Robert and Robert. Yeah, generally, generally that's Randy who's at first, you know, it's nineteen.
That is, yeah.
They need to maybe a little bit of survey or something inside and and rock here.
I will tell you that typically if it's a citizen's ten one, the ten one's the responsibility of the property. I look at it as a city ten one, it's almost very sensitive.
Yes.
Most of them are. Start a group.
All right, does anybody have anything else? All right, we're gonna recess the uh recess the uh city council meeting at seven over nine.
We have a public issue we'd like to bring up if that's possible.
Just a minute, just a minute. I'll get to it. All right, let's open up the BMI A agenda at seven ten. Okay, do we have four? We do have four. All right, now, let me say that what we did was we inadvertently left off public comments for the city agenda. It was not, it was not intentional, so what we are going to do now is to have public comments for both the city council agenda and the BMI A. When you come up here, citizens of Blanchard are going to get uh get to speak first. We speak, uh our public comments are for fifteen minutes, three minutes per person. We have a handy dandy day counter here. So when the, when it goes off, we uh we ask you to stop speaking so we can have uh so somebody else can can speak. Thank you. Yeah, nobody signed up to uh nobody signed up to speak.
I thought we had to fill out a new paper about all this. I think I was supposed to sign in also.
Okay, you have one of the papers filled out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Please give me just a minute and let me finish here. The uh the the uh city council, please, if I'm gonna take any action on comments that you make. Let me see, but I kept my notes down here. Make sure I don't uh I don't forget anything. All right, as I said, there are three minutes, hour left, we ask that you, anyone we get through. Uh city council members will not address you, they will not respond to you. If you ask us a question, we're not going to respond to you. It is merely your chance to speak to the city council.
In other words, it's a shit show, so they they don't have to say anything.
We will try to resolve those uh with what we've done, so. Uh at this time, I I have all the words, pray the documents went good to release and uh. Do you mind coming right after I give up too? Thank you, I appreciate you, others. Thank you. All right. Mr. Gatz, please, please go ahead.
Uh most of your team, uh the video that's out was a wonderful content, I'm a tennis dresser. Uh here in Oklahoma, I'm also a catastrophic dresser and I've got a wall over my face. I'm also an American, a veteran who I serve my country and I stand up for my rights. Um a big thing for the police department that's been going on for decades, and it's not just something that started is that the police feel that they have the right to hide anybody they want at any time. We do have a full agreement right not to get that information. And here in Blanchard, it's a problem because they didn't even know, know what the law was. They had asked somebody and then when they found out, it's still a little bit. Regardless, uh I mean, more and more Americans are gonna start standing up for their rights because of the treatment that they get from uh police departments, not just here in Blanchard, but everywhere in the nation. And those rights and the constitution, that should be something that's taught uh in the first day of student academy. And me, on that day, I was just standing up for my rights. I wasn't being argumentative or rude to them. I just wasn't one to participate in their investigation, and that's my role. But when you're upset with this officer, better prepare for you in the relationship that came between you. And I was just trying to stand up for my rights and all American rights because that's what I do as an American. I'm a I'm a veteran. I fought for my rights. And I just wanted to make sure that uh people in Blanchard can understand, hey, those rights are theirs too. Okay, uh people coming through the lecture, passing through Blanchard shouldn't be afraid when you pull over by the police department and their rights may violate because they're just passing through because they have brake light or tell it, I mean, something. Uh and they shouldn't be afraid to stand up for their rights uh for threat of retaliation because they're standing up for those rights. And that's why I came here today to you guys, to voice my opinion on this and uh just wanted to be heard because a lot of people are out there thinking that I raped the police, or I didn't rape the police. That's their own video, their own live game video that I posted. I didn't rape them. I didn't ask them to come to me. I was there doing my job, what I was supposed to be doing. And I did once and I tried to raise them and they didn't, and I was just beginning to stand up for my civil rights. So I thank. So, I thank you for taking your time on here, there's a lot to say and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for coming to, to Blencher and speaking. We appreciate you. Has anybody else signed up to speak?
There's still people right there to sign up.
There isn't another back there.
There wasn't one, good here.
Oh, listen, we, we're going to need you to fill it out, fill it out, we'll let you speak, uh, speak and then fill it out. Would you, please don't leave without filling it out.
I was trying to bring your attention to an incident occurred in Olaf Springs where a terror client was detained by the police for 20 minutes, placed in the back of the police car for filming. He won $41,000 and he didn't commit crime. So, uh, if you thought, well, chief, they're still going around and he doesn't understand the law, there are no failings by East actions in Oklahoma. I don't care if you're being arrested, if you're the subject of a crime, or they think you're dumb something, or they saw you do it. You don't, we don't care about East action, we don't have to tell you who we are, even if you're the police. Um, so, what they do try to do is go to obstruction. And they'll go to that charge immediately and it usually doesn't hold up. Because if there's no crime committed, yeah, obstruction is a difficult thing to do because you're, you're minding your own business. I saw the video of this individual here, I saw the body cams where the officer's called, they, uh, the attorney, the DA, and, uh, they told him, well, he's not committed crime, there's nothing you can do. And then, uh, Space White, Chief of Police comes up and he wants him arrested. He doesn't care what the law says, but he's the man in town that can get you arrested, so he tells his officers to arrest him. Well, after he leaves, the officers kind of look at each other and say, well, he hasn't committed a crime, so they don't arrest him. Now, I don't know if they tried to file charges on the labor or not, but this, this kind of behavior is gonna cost you money, it is. And, uh, if it continues, you could find yourselves at the other end of the lawsuit, your city could. So I, I just want to let you guys know this, that our rights are protection, even if you don't like our rights, they need to be, they need to be respected. That's, that's one thing I wanted to bring up to you guys. There's some training you should be done in the police department. You might look at that, you may look at training in the chief. Um, seems like they didn't know the law when they approached him and they actually had to make some phone calls on a simple, simple procedure as to IDing the suspect. So, you may have some issues here, it could cause you some problems down the road and that's all that I can bring up. I'm a veteran as well and, uh, it was disturbing to see that on, on the news. Just wanted to leave you guys with that, not put this out.
Sir, before you leave, please give us your name.
My name is Timothy Harper.
Okay. Alright, and, and please. Okay. Alright, we are then going to close the public hearing. We appreciate both of you coming out, both of you taking some time to speak and I do want to thank you very much. So, let's, uh, let's continue with the BMI A, if I can find what I'm at. One more. Oh. Wherever you start, yeah. Alright, so this, this is the item is, uh, is, uh, the account in 43, uh, 1,285, pretty much.
I think it's within every city about gun ordinances.
Yeah.
He is.
Is that the guy sitting in the front row?
Yeah, the, the guy to the left, the, the Perryman, I've, I've dealt with him before.
Apparently reasonable, actually, he's worked with me every time. But he doesn't want to answer questions while he's in his official capacity in the, uh, in the Capitol.
Yeah.
He won't answer any questions.
While you were up there speaking, I heard you. Oh, okay, with what?
Seems like everyone loves the audio from my, uh, camera.
What phone do you have?
It's the, uh, 1 plus 6 T McLaren. This phone only costs $700, it has 10 gigs of RAM, 256 gigs of storage.
The McLaren version of it?
Yep, 20 megapixel here, 10, uh, 16 on the front, only $700.
Wow.
I've, I've heard of that phone, they're fantastic.
Only reason they're so cheap is because they don't advertise on TV like everyone else, so they can keep their prices cheaper.
Not like these. Thank you.
I mean, 10 gigs and 250 storage.
250.
Well, they forgot. Yeah, they're not on the agenda and they were closing their business, I was like, oh, whoa, whoa.
Then weirdo.
I probably, I wonder if I should have addressed her in the meeting.
Yeah.
See you outside of the Capitol.
Yeah, actually, we can wait until he comes out.
Okay, are you gonna wait?
Yeah. Cause that, the city attorney is that one, uh, he's real.
I think I got up to a max of 31 people and, uh, that's not too bad for.
I had, I made somebody a mod in my channel and dropped your link over there, so that way, cause they couldn't hear mine, but they could hear yours.
And I was three seats back from you and they're like, wow, the audio on this is fantastic.
What kind of phone do you have?
1 plus 6 T.
Yeah, that's a Japanese phone.
No, it's American.
Or is it Canadian? 1 plus T?
Yeah.
1 plus 6 T, yeah, they're.
Yeah.
They started out with more budget phones, but then they came up to better quality, better materials. 1 plus 6 T.
Yeah, and each phone comes with its own, uh, screen protector on it automatically.
I wanna, I wanna talk to the, uh,
They're fantastic.
That'd be better than the one I thought.
I, I watch, I watch YouTube channel called Unbox Therapy and he has nothing but good stuff to say about those phones. Nothing but goodness out of those phones. I can write down your channel name, so I don't like, I can't remember right now.
I'll give you a card.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. I'll sub to your channel and everything, you sub to mine, it's okay. I remember your video with the hillbillies, that was an awesome video. I need to watch it, cause I, I.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
It's so long. I like Motorcypher content, so, I mean.
I don't think we have to do our songs to anybody. We don't have a channel, we're not important.
Yep.
Runs Android.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very basic stock Android.
That's what I want. Alright, thanks.
No.
Motor Joe, okay, yeah. Need to get some of these.
And here's my other spot, you might like that one.
Okay.
Have you heard about the rally we're having in Broken Arrow?
No.
Um, on June 1st, we're having a open carry rally to support Picture Perfect that got arrested, open carrying his AR pistol. And, uh, so we want to go.
Where at?
Broken Arrow.
Okay.
South side of Tulsa, June 1st at 10 a.m. and we're gonna walk through the city with our open carry ARs.
Uh, somebody said ask for the Discord info, or?
Okay. Yeah, Discord, Ben can really help you with that, um, you have to have an invite.
Right.
I think he's able to do that. My, for some reason, my invite screen is blank.
Uh, my Discord name is, uh, Motor Joe, then the pound sign, 3393.
Okay.
Get that, anyone out there, it's Motor Joe.
There's another one that we're in.
Pound sign, 3393.
Very large Discord.
Can you wear Angela's jacket, he's free?
Yeah.
Really, it feels good out here, but then again, I got two jackets on.
Yeah, yeah, you're.
I have 0% body fat, so the wind.
Lucky you.
We never even say hi to anybody. But that's him son and I'm his girlfriend.
Where is Kenneth?
Y'all from here?
It's through me like nothing else.
Yeah, we actually live in, uh, Chicago.
Oh, okay.
Good speech, man. Oh, you think so?
Yeah.
I had more that I wanted to say and I couldn't think of it.
We're actually in some of his videos.
This is actually my first livestream I've ever.
Really?
Yeah, I, I mainly do stuff on Twitch.
Mm-hmm.
The gamers network, so that's where I mainly do my, uh, streaming, but. Oh, well, I dropped it.
Screen protector.
Right.
In case.
I dropped my phone over time.
Hold on.
Free country jacket.
There we go. See, I left my gun at the house.
I actually have a shotgun, but I don't pick it out. Really?
But I have my license, everything on my phone.
Yeah.
Watch out, babe.
I'm sorry.
So, huh. I, I do that from time to time, I forget my wallet and stuff. Everyone does.
Thank you. I actually skipped a, uh, gun town, town discussion, town hall discussion to come here.
See, there was a guy here, um, let's see here.
I skipped it, come here.
Going back in the comments.
Yeah.
His name was Taming Trolls.
I really want to talk to the city attorney, see if he'll comment on where he is on his investigation into the complaint I filed. Uh, I know he can't comment during city council, uh, or meeting, but I'd like to catch him when he comes out of the meeting and ask him that.
Yeah. Well, Chris is right here, he's, he's kind of shy at the moment, but he's here. He's always in Discord with us, though.
Thank you.
I think he probably is the one that traveled to Barthers.
Where'd you come from?
Sweden.
Sweden, wow.
Alright, sorry about that, apparently it's, there we go.
You know that your pocket actually is open?
Yeah, it's, fill it. It's an air. Yeah.
No, no. Do they let you, do they, do they let you all have guns over there, can you possess guns?
Uh, for target shooting or, or hunting. You need a hunting license, that's not too hard to get, or be a member of a gun club for whatever stipulated time the gun club runs.
You're not allowed to carry a gun like this around?
No, 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 no.
Come here and look at this.
Huge, no, no.
Yeah, well, I can carry that around right now, here, I can walk down the street corner and all over. It's legal here, we just passed some laws. I'd like to ask him, why would you have decided to say you like to shoot it or something? It's a direct order, but if he knew that it was wrong, why would he continue to do it? I mean, he's, he's also ultimately responsible. Yeah. You've seen the whole thing.
Did you see the uncut ones that I sent you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't cut one piece out unless it was like dead air and information such as the private information of the, uh, the people that you were.
Policy holder.
So, um, that's, they saw it all, they saw everything, as long as it was, all three videos were all put into one video to make it one 18, 20, 30 minute video.
As their council, I mean, you have to.
But I do want to know why the other two shut off their cameras.
I was wondering about that, it was, uh.
Nye, Nye was the only one who kept her camera on until the very end.
Well, maybe it's because, uh, Haynes thought that everything was fine and he didn't commit any crime and he turned it off because of that reason, but then when he asked the chief, he, he said, what did he do? Did he do anything?
Well, that, that's Haynes.
That's what I'm saying, cause as soon as he, that, that body cam was off.
Right.
At that time. So, then Bologna turned off his when he went into the car and then.
When he started talking to the chief.
Right, on the phone. And Nye's the only one that did it, so that's surprising enough.
Ah, it's just speeding.
I was not, I thought it was gonna be.
You can go crash your gun today.
I'm glad it's not raining.
No, I'm glad it's not.
Cause this is my only, uh, mode of transportation at the moment.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What, that was from when?
When you broke your back?
Oh, yeah, that's what, yeah, when you told him about that, there's the injuries.
January 14th, 2018.
And no, ladies, I wasn't trying to show you guys his ass.
I was, ladies.
Some crack, it's all some crack.
So, if anybody out there was wondering if I was telling the truth about that, yes, I absolutely was.
Sorry.
It's alright.
They're saying.
No, a lot, a lot of people are saying that I'm lying about my broken back.
Make him some weights, ask him if, if they can prove it's not broken, if, if they can pay you a hundred dollars and if you can't prove it, you pay them a fair.
Yeah.
So, you know, put it, put it on them.
Put a weight on it?
Yeah. When you did the, um, the audit with the police chief, did you tell him about the rally that you're doing on the first? No, I haven't told the police chief about that yet. I haven't told Broken Arrow about that, that's up in Broken Arrow. Oh. That's 100 miles away, where, where he got arrested, where Picture Perfect got arrested. So they're, they're not aware of it, but you just, you guys are just gonna roll in? Yeah, we're gonna roll in, yep, we have the right to do it.
It's healthier for you than that.
It was on the news, so they know. Oh, they've been seeing all these streams, I'm sure they know, but.
Yeah, this here is, uh.
We've got some bike clubs gonna show up, Open Carry Texas is coming, Arkansas. Who from OCT is coming? CJ Grisham and his crew, he's renting a bus, coming up to Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. Yeah, he's put that up, it's been on the news, so January 1st, if you can be in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma at 10 a.m., you can read. Uh, June 1st, I'm sorry, June 1st. Um, also, May 31st, we're gonna do camera audits, if you can come, uh, May 31st, let's walk into the police station, let's walk into city hall. I'm gonna be up there the day before the rally, uh, to walk around and, and go into their places and try to talk to the DA about this. So if you guys want to come up, show up, we'd love to have you in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma on June 1st at 10 a.m. I'm also gonna wrap you off an AR 15 pistol, uh, for $5, you can walk away with an AR 15 pistol, so in Broken Arrow.
Don't, don't, no, no, don't, don't be doing that.
There you go. That should help you a little bit.
That's good.
Yeah, cause, uh, I, it's, I mean, it's not a, it's not a secret or anything, but I, it's like literally, uh, uh, when I had my surgery, I'd do like two mils every time.
Oh, hell yeah.
There's Facebook pages too, uh, 2A Rally Broken Arrow on Facebook, look that up, you'll see three pages dedicated to the rally. Don't you see everybody there?
Yeah, I just gave you all a hundred and fifty dollars worth of, right there.
There you go.
Fifty bucks each, what the retail price is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, $50 for 350 milligrams, 10 in a pouch, so that's 35 milligrams per gummy. And you can get any local dispensary that actually sells it, here in Oklahoma.
Hey, we're taking our state back a little bit by little bit, aren't we?
Are you?
I was gonna actually take it, I thought it was just regular candy.
It's good, it's good.
It's to relieve the pain and all that.
Yeah.
It's what I use for, I have to use the C D and THC.
That's that devil candy that, that.
No, sir, it is, it is, it is goodness. It's like, it is not obscene, it's like the devil's.
That tells you how, how naive I am about that stuff, guys, I didn't know.
Don't you know to check your kid's candy at Halloween?
Yeah.
No, I need to check my wife's candy at Halloween.
Well, maybe the, the attorney is, uh, gonna duck off the back.
Is that who's sitting, is that who's sitting right there in front of me, that?
Yeah.
He was the attorney?
Yeah.
It's interesting, he wasn't in the room when you were talking.
Yeah, I noticed.
Yep.
Oh, my gosh, look at that, guys.
Look at that.
Support from Sweden, holy smokes, thank you so much.
Hold on, hold on, let, let me, let me make a point here.
That's awesome.
Hold on, you got two more bags.
Chris, giving a gift.
Hold on.
No, what, hold on, what was the point, though? What was the whole point there?
She's gonna do this.
Whole point was he made a big deal because, um, girls give gifts and they get each other.
Thank you so much.
Holy shit, dude, that's like 10 pounds.
We didn't have to, oh goodness, Chris.
What the hell did you buy? Is this all from Sweden?
Yeah.
Oh, dude, party at the hotel.
Yeah, what's that say, see? You can't say that. Prapikar. That would suck a wine. You can't say them words.
I gotta give you a hug.
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome, dude. You see anything you like, you can grab one, grab two. Shit, fucking help me out.
Look at, look at, oh, Chris, that was so nice.
Oh, that looks cool, what is that? That's chocolate, is that chocolate? Bombing memorial in Oklahoma City.
What is this?
No.
That might be interesting.
Oh, coffee.
Coffee.
Alright, guys, that's what coffee looks like from Sweden. And it's certified, it says.
Right, green light, I have three things.
And that's decaf.
Let him grab a couple of things since he gave me some of the, the armies.
Yeah, like, if you must grab a couple, then, then grab a couple, yeah, like.
Now, I remember, now, I remember whenever I was overseas, there was, um, strawberry Nestle.
They're saying Swedes are better than the Russians, just so you know.
Strawberry Nestle chocolates? I can't find them here in the States. Whenever I travel overseas, I can find them all day long over there.
They are.
Yeah. That looks like those, uh.
So y'all are going to do some cop watching tonight? Blanchard, okay, I'm down for that.
That looks like them gummies I just gave him, you know?
Yeah.
Right there. Actually be a good little. What we have here, we have Aladdin.
There's some bushes behind these houses.
I'm guessing it's chocolate. Is this chocolate?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I mean, it looks like a chocolate box, so.
You see anything you like?
Oh, yeah.
Well, grab it, take it, man, he's going to take that to the, to the car.
Okay, here, I'll just take it with you.
If you, grab something, if you want.
All right. Ah, this is fun.
This is cool.
Yeah, it turns out I forgot my wallet. If I have my license on my wallet, I did that just in case, because I always forget my wallet.
Yep, me too.
And since they can take your insurance from your phone, why not your phone, uh, brother's like this.
And that's a disposable ticket, anyway.
The infamous truck.
Yeah. Oh, good infamous lottery about.
Uh, that's back there?
Yep.
Ah, there it is, people.